A quorum being present, the annual town meeting will come to order. We'll omit reading the return of the warrant, which shows that it was properly served. I ask that all who can rise. Rabbi Judith Epstein will give the invocation, and I ask that you remain standing after the invocation for the pledge of allegiance.
On this beautiful first full evening of summer, we pray, God, we cannot merely ask you to solve the problems of our community, as the world was made in such a way that we must find our own path to justice within ourselves and with our neighbor. We cannot merely pray to you to root out prejudice, for we already have eyes with which to see the good in all people if we would only use them rightly. We cannot merely pray to you to end ignorance, for we have the ability to properly educate our citizens if we only use our powers of consensus justly. We cannot merely pray to you to grant easy answers to our challenges, for we already have great minds with which to search out solutions if we would only use them constructively. Therefore, we pray instead for strength, determination, and willpower to do instead of merely pray, to become instead of merely wish, that our world, our community, our town, our schools be secure havens, and that our lives may be blessed. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Judy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming tonight. It's been a tumultuous time since we gathered here a year ago. A pandemic, an economic collapse, protests against racial injustice, and assault on our democracy, all have challenged our nation. There can be little doubt that better days lie ahead. I'm proud of our community and grateful beyond measure to live in this country and in this town. One of the attributes I've always admired about our town meeting, even before I became moderator, is our tradition of respectful discourse. Thankfully, that tradition is alive and well at town meeting, but in other places and in other media, it seems to be in jeopardy. I urge us to remember the words of Abraham Lincoln in his first inaugural address as the Civil War was about to begin. "We are not enemies but friends. We must be friends. Though passion may have strained, it must not break our bonds of affection. The mystic chords of memory will yet swill the chorus of the Union when again touched by the better angels of our nature." Let's be mindful whenever we engage to do the town's business of the better angels of our nature. Traditionally, the moderator has introduced a memorial resolution honoring those town employees and officials whose deaths occurred during the previous year. Last year, I omitted this resolution as one of several measures to make the meeting as short as possible. I submit the following memorial resolution, which includes those who died during 2019 and 2020. Whereas the citizens of Manchester by the sea note with profound regret the deaths of several of their friends and neighbors during the past two years, and seek to recognize and acknowledge their varied contributions to the town's commonwealth and welfare and our mutual sense of community. We citizens hereby salute the departed, acknowledge our common indebtedness to them, extend the sympathy of the town to their intimates and survivors, and declare that this resolution be entered in the town archives and a true copy be sent to the appropriate survivors. The persons memorialized and their achievements are proclaimed in the order of the dates of their deaths. Leonard Neil Andrews, police sergeant. Miles A. Carroll, Department of Public Works. George Putnam, library trustee, chair Finance Committee. Carol A. Fowler, school aide. Carolyn A. Hardwick, school cafeteria aide. Excuse me. Andrew S. Harris, Chair Downtown Improvement Committee. Lawrence P. Hall, firefighter. Charles E. Capello, Department of Public Works and School Custodian. William H. Hatcher, School Committee, Board of Selectmen. John R. Adams, Board of Health. Athena E. Thibodeau, Town Accounting Office. Suzanne Baker, School Crossing Guard. Theodore Teddy Brown, Planning Board. Philip Gothier, Department of Public Works Foreman. Lloyd Wilson, Town Wiring Inspector, Planning Board. Vincent Terrill Sr., MBTA Advisory Board. Christina St. Pierre, Town Clerk. Bruce Hudson, Police Officer. William Vashon, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Energy Efficiency Programs Advisory Board. Gloria Tanner, School Teacher. Benjamin Gannett, Chair School Committee. John Reza, Water Department. Kenneth Sukarsky, Police Sergeant. Eli Bowling, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, moves the resolution as read, and Jeffrey Bodmer Turner, the Vice Chair, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no? The memorial resolution is unanimously adopted. I ask that all who can rise and observe a moment of silence in memory of these former Let me take this opportunity to introduce our new town clerk, Diane Buco. I've been fortunate throughout my tenure as moderator. You're anticipating to work with dedicated and knowledgeable town clerks. The clerk's job is demanding and has many facets, including managing logistics for town meeting. In a few short months, Diane has shown that she's fully up to the task. Now, please join me in welcoming her to her first Manchester town meeting. I'm going to omit most of the opening comments I normally make in the interest of keeping the meeting as short as possible. I'll focus instead on those procedures that will be different tonight from our usual practice. I encourage all participants, except those who are unable due to a medical condition, to wear a mask while checking in, when moving about the meeting, and on leaving, but feel free to remove your mask while seated and if I recognize you to address the meeting. There are microphones at the front of the aisles. If you want to speak, please go to the mic nearest your seat, and while approaching and leaving, the mics maintain at least six feet of separation from everyone else. If there's another voter already at the mic, wait at least six feet away from that person, and when that person leaves, wait for one of our volunteers, I think it's going to be Harbor Master by on Pike, to disinfect the wind cover and adjust the height of the microphone. When he steps away, then go to the mic, and please don't touch the microphone yourself. Wait to be recognized, and then give the meeting your name and address if we don't already have them. I'm Alan Wilson. Speakers must limit their remarks to two minutes or less unless they've received my permission in advance to speak longer, and no one has asked for it, you'll be happy to know. You should have picked up a purple card as you checked in. This identifies you as a voter. I want to thank resident Jim Starkey and Diane Buco for troubleshooting the electronic voting system. We believe we've corrected the problem that occurred last year, but if it should fail, and we have accounted hand vote, please hold up your card to make sure that you're counted. Non-voters are permitted to attend the meeting with the consent of the moderator. We have with us tonight Gregory Fetterstiel, Town Administrator, the heads of all town departments, Pamela Bowden, Superintendent of the Manchester Essex Regional School District, Avi Urbus, the Business Manager of the Regional School District, and Michelle Randazzo, Town Council with KP Law. All these people have my permission to be here and to speak if that becomes appropriate. It's unlawful to smoke on school grounds. I ask that you turn off or mute cell phones and other electronic devices. The meeting is being videotaped by 1623 Studios, although I don't see them. Oh, there he is. Oh, there she is. Thank you, and is also being recorded. I want to thank the following residents who are serving as volunteers tonight. Registerar voters Eileen Buckley, assisting the registrar in checking in voters Kathy Ryan, Kelly Dodd, Ruffin Driscoll, Ellen Flatley, Elaine Persons, Michelle Behr, and Pam Thorne, and serving as tellers Lee Simmons, Carolyn Kelly, Gretchen Wood, Martha Gubbins, Allison Anhold White, and Susan Myrack. Scouts and their parents helped assemble the packages of materials for this meeting, and with help from Parks and Recreation staff, distribute them to every household. I am grateful to all of them. Tom Keogh coordinated the distribution effort with his usual thoroughness, with assistance from Parks and Rec Director Cheryl Marshall. Thank you all for serving the town. I extend special thanks to the Manchester Board of Health and especially to Board Member Dr. Martin Hahn and former member Dr. Deborah Bradley. Martin and Deb have given generously of their time and expertise to help prepare for this meeting and make sure that it's as safe as possible for all participants. The full board reviewed and endorsed the public health protocol that we developed and published. Our approach was to err on the side of caution rather than take chances with health and safety. I now recognize Eli Bowling, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. A year ago, we gathered on this field in the middle of a pandemic and without a clear vision of when we might come out from under its shadow. At that time, there were about 125,000 dead in the U.S., and maybe not all of us had yet been touched directly. Today, a year later, there are over 600,000 dead, and I would venture to guess that pretty much everyone in town now personally knows someone who has died or been severely ill. And yet, Manchester has been fortunate. Very few of our residents can be numbered in the dead. We can be proud of the ways in which we supported each other and continue to support each other through all of this, and the efforts that we have made to protect each other. As our vaccination levels increase and people become more confident, I would ask that we all consider those who remain cautious. Some will not be able to vaccinate, and people will have different levels of comfortability dealing with a world where a significant number of people in countries have low vaccination uptake and/or ongoing uncontrolled infection. The town has had a complicated year. Besides the pandemic, we also had the wake-up call of a large proposed 40B development, which has been opposed by many of our residents. In the coming months, the second chapter of this process will unfold as the developer moves his application through mass housing. This process so far has had some positive outcomes. Residents have now become considerably more aware of the town's needs with respect to affordable housing. The town has been engaged in planning for our affordable housing needs for some time, but these processes take time. The effort by citizens groups to support affordable housing in town are laudable, and it is the board's fervent hope that in the coming years, there will be continued enthusiasm for supporting the production of true affordable housing, the kind that will allow our residents to age in place if they wish to, and for town and business employees at all levels to be able to live in the town they work in. Despite the disruptions of this year, the elementary school building project has continued, and we can look forward to its opening in the next school year. This has been a long anticipated project, and we look forward to its conclusion. Although there were some delays in the construction due to the pandemic, the long-planned Town Common Project has also been completed. As has been the case for many years now, one of the primary themes for the upcoming year will be infrastructure improvement in town. In the budgets presented tonight, we continue to execute on the five-year rolling capital plan to address various infrastructure needs around the town, ensuring the roads will be drivable, your sidewalks will be walkable, your water will flow, and other stuff will flow too. Insofar as the town's articles in this warrant are concerned, the Board of Selectmen has worked with the town moderator and the town administrator to do our best to keep the warrant succinct in recognition of the fact that we are still in the tail end of the local effects of pandemic, as evidenced by this outdoor setting. We do believe that our next town meeting will be indoors. So I'd like to welcome you all and thank you for coming to the meeting. Tonight, you are both residents and the legislative body of the town, and we look forward to hearing your opinions and debate. Thank you, Eli. In general, the best way to follow the course of the meeting is with the annual report of the Finance Committee. The pamphlet contains all of the warrant articles, as well as the recommendations of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. They were in the packages delivered to every household, and there were extras at the check-in stations. There are also two handouts that you should have received when you checked in. The Consent Calendar, which I'll discuss in a few minutes, and the Regional School Committee's three motions under Article 7. We'll be voting electronically at this meeting. You should have received a keypad like this when you checked in. We're going to use the keypads for all votes. I'll announce when the voting period for each motion opens and ends, and then press 1 to vote yes or 2 to vote no on the motion under consideration. If you change your mind, just press the other button. The computer records only your last choice. And if you want to abstain, don't press any button, or if you've already recorded a yes or a no, then press 3, and that will clear the previous choice. The handsets transmit on line of sight to the small white box located on the stand in the middle in front of me. Because it's line of sight, it's important to hold the keypad above your head when you vote. If you hold it in your lap, chances are your neighbors will block the signal. The handsets are in sleep mode until a button is pressed, so the screen will be blank until you vote. After you vote, the LED in the upper right corner will show green, indicating that your vote was received, and the screen will display 1A for yes, 2B for no, or 3C for abstain, and the device then goes back to sleep. We've checked the handsets thoroughly and tested them on the field this afternoon, so it's very unlikely that any will fail to work. But if you don't see the appropriate display after voting or you experience any other problem, you can go back to the check-in station and get another. We'll conduct a couple of test votes to make sure everyone is comfortable with the system. First question. Is this perfect weather for an outdoor town meeting? Voting time is open. You'll have 15 seconds. Tell me when it's closed. Close now? Voting is closed. We'll now find the result. Yes, 220; no, 6. Second question. Does Bill Belichick miss Tom Brady? Ready? Voting is closed. The outcome is yes, 146; no, 77. Does anyone have any questions about how to vote electronically? Okay. This voting system will produce an anonymous log of how each handset was used on each vote. It's anonymous. Any voter who wishes will be able to go to the town clerk's house, county clerk's office, however, not to her house, and determine how his or her votes were recorded. I want to thank resident Jim Starkey for writing the computer program that will enable the town clerk to retrieve that information. As I said, the votes will be anonymous, so the town will not create a record that links voter's names to individual handsets. That means if you want to check your voting record with the town clerk, you'll need to write down the device's identifier. It's the six-character alphanumeric code on the back of the handset following the words "device ID." Or if you have a smartphone, just take a photo of the back of the clicker. That's all about electronic voting. When the meeting ends, it will be important to maintain social distancing and avoid creating bottlenecks at the exits. For this reason, I ask that you remain in your seats until I call your row. Those seated to my right should go to the exit near the refreshment stand, and those seated to my left should go to the exit near the traffic circle, over there. Please remember to return your handset to one of the bins at the check-in stations when you leave, and there are also recycling containers for water bottles and discarded papers. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to use a consent calendar this evening to deal with five warrant articles. Article 2, Section 18 of the Town's General Bylaw authorizes the moderator to publish a consent calendar consisting of those warrant articles that, in the moderator's judgment, are non-controversial. On May 30, I issued a consent calendar containing Articles 1, 2, 6, 9, and 10, which was posted on the town website and published in the Cricket on June 11. You should have received a copy as you checked in. Eli Bowling, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, moves to approve the motions under Articles 1, 2, 6, 9, and 10 in the consent calendar without debate, and Jeff Bodmer Turner seconds the motion. Does any voter wish to remove any of those articles from the consent calendar? Mr. Gates?
I would like to hold a hold on Article 1 concerning the possible report of the town order restoring protection committee. We have several articles in the section of the board.
So Article 1 is to receive and place on file the reports of town boards and committees. And you want to discuss that? I'm asking you a question. Mr. Gates?
Is there such a report? It's supposed to be a committee to protect our water.
I don't know if you could hear, Mr. Gates. He's saying that there is supposed to be a committee to protect our water supply. My understanding was that was a recommendation years back? I'm told that that was proposed, but it was never acted upon. There is no official committee to do that. Mr. Gates, are you asking to remove Article 1 from the consent calendar?
I just asked, is there a report from that committee?
No, there is no committee.
There is no committee, and therefore no report. My understanding is that you're not then asking to remove Article 1 from the consent calendar. All right. So we're now voting on Mr. Bowling's motion, which is to approve the motions under Articles 1, 2, 6, 9, and 10 in the consent calendar without debate. Does anyone else wish to remove any article from the consent calendar? Okay, the voting period is open. If you're in favor of Mr. Bowling's motion, press 1; if you're opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. Well, the vote is 225 yes and 8 no. Under our bylaw, this has to be unanimous, so we'll have to take up each of those articles Article 1. Eli Bowling, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, moves the article as printed in the warrant, and Jeff Bodmer Turner seconds the motion. Is there discussion? If you're in favor, please press 1; if you're opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. 236 yes and 1 no. Article 2 is to set the salaries of elective officers at zero. Eli Bowling moves to set the salaries of all the listed officers at zero, and Sarah Melish, the Chair of the Finance Committee, seconds. If you're in favor, please press 1; if you're opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. Vote is 237 yes and 4 no. Article 3. Ann Harrison moves, and Jeffrey Bodmer Turner seconds, that the town raise and appropriate $184,523 and that it be funded by taxation for the purpose of funding the town's FY22 share of the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District. The Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen both recommend approval. Is there discussion? Voting period is open. If you're in favor, press 1; opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. Result is 240 yes and 7 no. We've come to Article 4, which contains the operating budget requests of town departments and committees, and includes the recommendations of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. The report also contains the Finance Committee's recommended source of funding for each item. The requests and recommendations are found at pages 24 through 28 of the Finance Committee pamphlet. And Becky Jakes moves, and Sarah Melish seconds, that the town raise by taxation or otherwise to pay town debts and charges for the ensuing 12 months effective July 1, 2021, and appropriate the same, the amounts presented in the expenses budget summary section under the recommended and funding sources columns of the Finance Committee report. It's at page 28 under Article 4. Provided, however, that with prior approval of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, the town administrator is authorized to transfer unexpended funds within a summary category, for example, within general government. The Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee both recommend approval, and I recognize Becky Jakes of the Board of Selectmen for comments on the operating budget.
This is the first time I haven't had to move this. Very nice. Article 4 represents the fiscal year 2022 operating budget. This is comprised of department requests pertaining to salaries and normal operating expenses. These departments include general government, public safety, public works, other environmental, which is historic district, historic district, and conservation commissions, human services, library, debt service, and enterprise funds. The Finance Committee began work last fall, and we'll have more to say on this.
Thank you, Becky. I recognize Sarah Melish, the Chair of the Finance Committee, for comments on behalf of that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you all for coming. Last year, just before our town meeting, we rushed to revise the budget to support a 0% increase in the tax rate to help taxpayers who might be battered by the pandemic. The Affordable Housing Trust and an anonymous donor provided funds to actioning to pay rents and mortgages for residents whose income was adversely impacted by COVID. The town abated fees for small businesses, and we suffered a significant shortfall in the revenue from the beach. Despite it all... Despite it all, taxpayers paid their taxes, and the town remains in excellent financial shape with a AAA bond rating and healthy reserves. In order to give taxpayers relief as they continue to recover from the pandemic, the proposed budget anticipates a 1.5% increase in the tax rate rather than the normal 2.5%. Over the next two years, we anticipate receiving $1.5 million direct funding from the Federal American Recovery Plan Act, which will be used thoughtfully. We are on target with OPEB contributions, paying slightly more than the minimum, and enjoying healthy trust fund earnings through PRET. So we expect to retire the unfunded liability in advance of the original timeline. The proposed budget retains the existing services and adds an on-site custodian to provide needed services during business hours and replace some of the outsourced evening services. The overall increase in the operating budget for fiscal year 2022 is a manageable 2.23% for the town budget and 3.24% for the school budget. Our debt service continues to decrease each year as we pay down existing debt and do not incur additional town debt for capital items. We thank the town employees for carefully monitoring their budgets to remain within the appropriation and allow us to return some of the Finance Committee Reserve Fund to the town fund balance at the end of the year. We appreciate the input we have received from residents during the years as we reviewed the budget requests, and I thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah. I'll now go through Article four by major budget categories such as general government and read the total amount recommended for that category by the Finance Committee. If any voter wants to ask a question or change the Finance Committee's recommendation on any line item within that category, please call out "hold," and we'll stop and identify the item number. If any voter wishes to change the Finance Committee's recommended amount on any line item, we'll take those changes as amendments to the main motion and vote on each one separately. When we finish all the holds, we'll then vote on the main motion as amended if there are any changes. Until we've finished all action on Article four, the rules on reconsideration, which we normally apply, will not be in effect. General Government. 32% of Article four, Items 1 through 31. Total recommended for general government, $4,752,109. Are there any holds under general government? Hearing none. Public Safety. 25% of Article four, Items 32 through 49. Are there any holds under public safety? Total amount recommended is $3,657,427. Public Works. 15% of Article four, Items 50 through 58. The total recommended is $2,189,914. Are there any holds under public works? Other Environmental. 1% of Article four, Items 59 through 63. Total recommended is $66,155. Are there any holds under other environmental? Human Services. 2% of Article four, Items 64 through 69. Total recommended, $358,757. Are there any holds under human services? Library. 3% of Article four, Items 70 and 71. Total recommended is $511,258. Any holds under library? Recreation. 2% of Article four, Items 72 through 81. Total recommended is $367,422. Excuse me. Any holds under recreation? Debt Service. 8% of Article four, Item 82. Total recommended is $1,119,928. Is there a hold on debt service? Enterprise Funds. 12% of Article four, Items 83 through 87. Total recommended is $1,714,045. Any holds under enterprise funds? The total recommended for Article four is $14,737,015, and I have no holds. So then, we will vote on Ms. Jakes's motion. If you're in favor of that motion, please press one. If you're opposed, press two. Voting is closed. Yes is 242, no is 11. And since we've finished Article four, the reconsideration rules will now apply. Article five is the capital budget, and it's on page 29 of the Finance Committee pamphlet. John Round moves, and Sarah Melish seconds, that the town raise by taxation or otherwise to pay for the items listed and appropriate the same as presented under the recommended and funding sources columns of Article five. I recognize John Round for remarks on the capital budget.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening to you all. The 2022 capital budget is $3.3 million. This is in keeping with our goal of allocating at least $3 million annually for capital investments, an expenditure level which will gradually close the gap on our deferred needs. It is an increase relative to last year, when we reduced our capital expenditure to $2.1 million, anticipating lower local receipts from fees due to the pandemic. Our projects continue to mostly focus on replacing vehicles, improving roads, sidewalks, and drainage, and installing new pipes. In particular, we're budgeting funds for the Central Street Dam and Culvert Project. We hopefully expect that will commence within the next 12 to 18 months. Two design studies are included for an ADA accessible bathroom in the library and for the renovation of the Sweeney Park Fields. You will recall that the Sweeney Park study was one of the items that was removed from last year's budget when it was reduced. We recommend your approval of this proposed capital budget.
Thank you, John. And I recognize Sarah Melish for comments on behalf of the Finance Committee.
Thank you. The Finance Committee considered each of the capital items included in this article and feel the expenditures are appropriate and meets our goal of spending about $3 million per year on capital items based on our five-year capital plan. Since our reserves are higher than our target of 10% of the total operating budget and have been greater than 10% since 2014, we feel it is appropriate to use about $1 million from our fund balance. Since the budget proposed reflects only a 1.5% increase on the tax rate, we will not be using a capital exclusion in this budget cycle, and we will not be incurring any additional town debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any holds under Article five? I heard somebody say something. Yes, sir. Could you give us the item number, please? 12.
I would like just, I'm Brian Miller, 92, School Street. I'd just like to address having a bathroom for everybody in the library. I'm glad to see we're going to have an accessible bathroom, but I want that to be included to a bathroom for everybody in the library.
Thank you, sir. Any other holds under Article five? So that wasn't a proposal to change the item 12, so I think are ready to vote on Mr. Round's motion. If you're in favor, please press one. Okay, voting is open. If you're in favor, please press one. Voting is closed. And the yes was 234 and no was 11. Article six involves approving two expenditures from a prior fiscal year. Eli Bowling moves to transfer from available funds $1,780 for the purpose stated in the article, and Sarah Melish seconds. Under state law, Chapter 44, Section 44 of the general laws, this requires a 4/5 vote. Is there discussion? If you're in favor, please press one. Voting is closed, and the vote is 250 yes and five no, and that's more than 4 fifths. Article seven is the article that relates to the school operating and capital budgets, and I hope you all received the one-page set of three motions, because I'm not going to read them all, I'm just going to refer to the handout. So Ken Warnock of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee makes motion number one on the handout, and Matthew Harrington, also of the Regional School Committee, seconds. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee both recommend approval. This is an annual ritual we're required, under state law, to reaffirm the allocation formula under the regional school agreement each year. So that's what this is doing, it's not making any changes. Is there discussion under motion number one? And the voting period is open. If you're in favor, press one. Voting is closed. 246 in favor, sorry, 246 in favor and nine opposed, so the motion carries. And Ken Warnock makes motion number two on the handout, and Matthew Harrington seconds. Remarks, Mr. Warnock? Either one, your choice. While he's going to the podium, I'll just say that the Board of Selectmen, excuse me, and the Finance Committee both recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We had quite a year. First, I offer thanks to all the parents and families for their patience and support as we navigated a difficult situation. Going into last summer, we were challenged to create a structure for learning that would be accessible, accountable, and engaging for all students. Planning and adapting as public health guidelines were developed, we structured our usual curriculum with a typical school schedule, creating supports that would allow students to thrive during the pandemic. We provided an academic experience with appropriate time and learning while keeping our schools and our greater community healthy and safe. Thanks to the collaboration and resilience of all our community members, we accomplished these goals. This year, we implemented some new curricula as well as developed critical 21st century technology skills for communicating. We began updating the strategic plan that will guide us, having just finished our first 20 years as the Manchester Essex Regional School District. We have nearly completed both the new Memorial School as well as the Essex Playground. We are moving past the COVID crisis and into a future where our graduates have the knowledge and skills to compete globally. Our greatest challenge now is the budget. We collaborate regularly with the Boards of Selectmen and Finance in both Manchester and Essex, meeting to share information and map a multi-year strategy. The district has remained an efficient and responsible steward of your investment. While delivering an excellent education to our students, we have maintained a very even assessment growth averaging 3.17% per year over the last five years. The budget we present to you tonight shows a 3.5% year-over-year growth, with the district utilizing $335,000 from reserves and making operational cuts to minimize costs to taxpayers while meeting our target range for assessment growth. Additionally, we have managed the COVID crisis without any financial impact to the towns by using $960,000 of reserve funds to support related costs, including health and safety supplies, technology investments, and additional staffing. We greatly appreciate the support of our families, our communities, and our town partners as we address our budget challenges while maintaining the excellent education program the people of Manchester and Essex have come to expect. We remain committed to the education, well-being, and safety of your children. Please join me in voting yes on Article seven to fund our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Is there discussion? Okay, this motion relates to the operating budget for the school, and hearing no discussion, we'll go to a vote. Voting is closed, and the vote is 236 yes to 16 no. And Ken Warnock makes motion number three on the handout. This relates to the capital budget of the school system, and Matthew Harrington seconds. Is there discussion? Is the meeting ready to vote? Yes, we are. If you're in favor, please press one. Voting is closed, and the vote is 243 yes, I'm sorry, 243 yes to 12 no. So the motion is adopted. Article eight is the report of the Community Preservation Committee, and Jack Burke of the Community Preservation Committee moves, and Ron Mastodracomo seconds. The article is presented in the warrant with the following clarifications. Items one and two are to be funded by FY 2022 estimated receipts for the purposes stated, and Items three through 12 are to be funded from FY 2021 undesignated fund balance for the purposes stated, for a grand total of $623,400. And the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee both recommend approval. Is there discussion? If not, we'll go directly to a vote. Voting is closed, and the vote is 248 yes to seven no. Article nine is the appropriation to the other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund, and Eli Bowling moves to transfer 271 Bowling moves to transfer $271,388 from available funds for the purpose and subject to the conditions stated in the article, and Sarah Melish seconds. Is there discussion? If not, the voting period is open. Voting is closed, and the vote is 249 yes and 4 no. Article 10 is another annual event, and Eli Bowling moves the article as printed in the warrant, and Sarah Melish seconds the motion. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee both recommend approval. Is there, excuse me, is there discussion? Voting is open. Voting is closed, and the vote, sorry, voting is closed, and the vote is 249 yes and 4 no. So that motion is adopted. Article 11 relates to the relocation of Chabaco Road, which is a project that the Town of Hamilton is undertaking, and Eli Bowling moves to pass over “do nothing” under Article 11, and Becky Jakes seconds the motion, and I will explain why. Article 4, Section 8 of the town’s general bylaw, provides that no conveyance or acquisition of any interest in real property shall be authorized by town meeting unless it’s been referred to the planning board and the planning board has submitted its report to the town. This article involves both an acquisition and a disposition, and the reference, the referral to the planning board and the planning board report didn’t happen. Multiple boards and individuals are responsible for making sure we comply with this provision: the planning board, the town planner, the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, town council, and ultimately, as moderator, I’m the final check on compliance. And we all dropped the ball. The problem with shared responsibility is that things like this can fall between the chairs, and this article did. Town council offered us an out. We could have petitioned the state legislature to override the bylaw and cure the defect, but we decided that we shouldn’t try to short-circuit our own rule and the planning board’s process. Eli and I promised three things. First, it won’t happen again. Second, we’ll implement a process to ensure that it won’t. And three, this article will be coming back soon to a town meeting near you. Is the meeting ready to vote? Voting period is open. We’re voting to pass over “do nothing.” That’s right. Voting is closed. Motion to pass over carries 247 yes to 8 no. And Article 12 is a citizen’s petitioned article. Victoria Esser moves the article as printed in the warrant. Is that seconded? That’s seconded. The Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen are taking no position. This article is non-binding. It merely expresses the sense of the meeting. I recognize Victoria Esser for remarks.
Good evening. I’m relatively new to Manchester, but have quickly come to treasure its sense of community and commitment to the environment. And Article 12 aims to advance these values and much more. As many of you know, and more than 700 of us signed a recent petition on, there is a 40B petition, excuse me, a 40B proposal to construct 136 multifamily unit on forest land adjacent to School Street. This proposal is inconsistent with the town’s true underlying affordable housing needs and presents significant environmental and safety risks for us all. At the same time, Manchester faces a significant affordable housing gap that’s critically important to address, because as a community, we want to have the vibrancy that comes with the diversity and perspective and economic circumstance. We want the people who work in this community to be able to live here as well. And that’s why it’s important for us to express our support for producing more affordable housing units as outlined in the Manchester Housing Production Plan, and to endorse the work of the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Authority, including through renovating and expanding Newport Park and the Plains. We’ve taken concrete action as a town to close this affordable housing gap with sustainable solutions to meet our town’s needs. That’s been demonstrated recently through the purchase of Powderhouse Lane, 29 units, by the North Shore Community Development Coalition, a nonprofit based in Salem, which was made possible through a $1.5 million equity capital, which was contributed by more than 250 families and residents of Manchester, which is a truly remarkable achievement. We need to continue this work and express our support for it, and therefore, I hope you’ll endorse Article 12. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Esser. I recognize Jeffrey Bodmer Turner for the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. The Board felt it was important to clarify why we took no position on this article. As many of you may be aware, the Board of Selectmen conducted public negotiations with Strategic Land Ventures, who was seeking a letter of endorsement from the Board in a process referred to as a “friendly” 40B. The 40B letter of endorsement would have set certain broad conditions on the project, allowing SLV to proceed to the Massachusetts Housing Authority for a comprehensive permit application. The developer would then bring forward the comprehensive permit application to our town’s Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the only body in the town that has the authority to approve or reject the project. The “friendly” 40B negotiations with the Board ended in April, when SLV withdrew, and turned directly to the Massachusetts Housing Authority. This legal process for seeking the letter of endorsement from MHA, referred to as an unfriendly 40B, now rests with the Mass Housing Authority, who has notified the town and requested input from the Board of Selectmen on the SLV application. The Board of Selectmen is currently conducting public meetings to review and comment on content submitted by town boards and residents regarding the application of SLV. The outcome of this review will be a letter written to the Mass Housing Authority outlining the Board’s position on this specific project. These public hearings will come to a conclusion after the close of our annual town meeting tonight. The Board of Selectmen prefers not to take a position on the merits of Article 12 prior to bringing our public meetings to a conclusion. This article ties together both the SLV project and a statement of future policy goals regarding affordable housing development in our community. While the Board strongly supports the development of affordable housing in our community, in light of the public hearings we are conducting on SLV, we can take no position on the entire article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bodmer Turner. Is there discussion? No? Really? Is the meeting ready to vote? Yes, sir. Mr. Carvalho? I think that mic isn’t on. Mic. Try again.
Test? There we go. First of all, I’d like to thank the Board of Selectmen for the effort that you all put in over the last year on this very important issue. It was contentious. You worked incredibly hard. You earned your salaries. And then some. But I think more significantly, you earned the lasting appreciation of our community for the time and the effort that you all put into it. So I want to thank you as a resident, as a friend, for all of your efforts in our regard. The second thing I’d like to say is I have some passing familiarity with this issue, and having been involved in various organizations, I stand in my place as a resident of this town and ask those of you that have attended the meetings, of which there were very many, to think back on the comments made by the developer in this regard. The developer, in a public meeting, said that this development would be less safe, because he wanted to do it his way. It was cheaper, it was better for him, but he acknowledged, at the end of the day, it was less safe. This community has a history of supporting environmental challenges and causes, and the preservation of our environment is a value we hold very dear. This developer has values that are inconsistent with ours, and I would ask for your vote in a positive way to reflect the continuation of these values, which have enriched our community, made it more vibrant, more verdant, and a more welcoming place for all of us. Finally, I would say that the benefit of being outdoors today, it enriches all of us. Getting out into the environment enriches us as people. It helped me, my family, get through this pandemic by just being outdoors. We need to preserve these places, and we can do it when we come together and express a unified position to our values. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carvalho. Further discussion? Is the meeting ready to vote? Voting period is open. Press 1 in favor, or 2 if you’re opposed. The vote is 247 in favor and 13 opposed. So the motion is adopted. Article 13 is a proposal to amend the general bylaw, and Jay Bothwick moves the article as printed in the warrant, and Tom Keogh, seconds. And the Finance Committee takes no position on this article, and the Board of Selectmen recommends the advice of the planning board. The town council has advised us that blasting and the use of explosives are regulated under state law, but Chapter 148, Section 9 of the General Laws permits towns to regulate blasting in a manner that’s consistent with the Comprehensive Fire Safety Code in the Code of Massachusetts Regulations. But if this bylaw amendment is adopted, the town will be required to submit it for approval to the State Board of Fire Prevention Regulations under that statute. And like all local bylaws, it’s also subject to approval by the Attorney General. And I recognize Jay Bothwick for remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 13 proposes to amend the town’s existing bylaw regulating earth removal, where the quantity of material removed exceeds that excavated to make room for the portion of the new structure below the finished grade, or if the excavation is deeper than 15 feet from the pre-construction grade. If such earth removal exceeds 250 cubic yards, a written permit is required from the planning board. The planning board may not issue such a permit unless it determines the proposed earth removal would not be contrary to the best interests of the town. The bylaw provides a list of effects that shall be considered contrary to the best interests of the town. It also spells out many general limitations or conditions the planning board should consider imposing, and a more limited set of specific limitations or conditions the planning board must impose in connection with granting any permit. Article 13 seeks to add to the general limitations that should be considered, language requiring special consideration by the planning board if the proposed structure is of a size and scale significantly larger than substantially all the existing structures in town, and involves blasting. Given the increased risks, noise, vibration, dust, and the like resulting from drilling and blasting, we think this special consideration is warranted for projects of this size and scale that also involve blasting. Currently, the earth removal bylaw does not specifically mention the size of structure or blasting as a factor to be considered by the planning board when it’s considering whether to grant an earth removal permit or the conditions to impose on the applicant if granted. Given its limited scope, one might ask whether this article is needed at all. The reason is the enormous impact blasting in such cases would have on Manchester. For example, if SLV were to proceed with its proposal to build 136 units on Shingle Hill, its blasting is estimated to generate more than 275,000 cubic yards of rock fragments and other materials to be moved off-site. That equates to approximately 11,000 very large trailer loads, or about 42 loads each weekday for a full year. We believe that a blasting campaign of this magnitude, whether by SLV or anyone else, warrants an extra measure of oversight. We acknowledge there are separate, non-town-based imposed regulations that apply to blasting, focused on the qualifications of those doing the blasting, safety of the site and the like, but not the additional impact on the community from a large-scale project that also involves blasting. We believe these larger developments that involve blasting will have a much greater impact on our community and should receive special consideration by the planning board as proposed by Article 13. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. And I recognize Jeff Bodmer Turner for the Board of Selectmen.
The chill got to me. So I’m going to try and be succinct. The Board of Selectmen supports the advice of the planning board to oppose this blasting permit article. The town planning board is responsible for overseeing and adjudicating earth removal permits that involve blasting. The planning board bases their position on existing comprehensive mass general law codifying applications for blasting permits, safety procedures, and other considerations. In addition, the Manchester-by-the-Sea Fire Department oversees the implementation of the use of explosives for earth removal under regulations related to the existing state law. To avoid conflicting guidelines with the proposed town bylaw and existing mass general laws and regulations, the Board of Selectmen is following the advice of the planning board to to oppose this blasting permit article. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And I'll recognize Ron Mastodracamo, the Chair of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening to all of you. On May 10, the Planning Board took up discussion on amending Article 12, Section 4, as described in Article 13. Chief Cleary made a presentation on current safety information and procedures on blasting. He said the regulations are found in 527 CMR, Code of Mass Regulations, and administered through the Department of Fire Safety. An applicant for a blasting permit must apply to the Fire Department, who subsequently makes a site visit. There are many checks and balances that oversee the blasting. Under CMR 527, there are state regulations as to licenses, permits, sales, storage, use, transportation, handling, there's a design plan, allowable limits, pre-blast surveys. In addition, during blasting operations, a fire detail unit is present. Under CMR 527, as mentioned, there is no mention of what is going to be built regarding size, number of units, as the result of blasting. As previously stated, the chief advised to us that under Mass General Laws 148, any bylaw change would have to go before the Blasting Board for review and acceptance. Given this information, the Planning Board felt that adequate safeguard checks and balances are already in place and are regulated by proper professional authority, and there was no need to add additional vetting by the Planning Board, which is not expert in this matter. The Planning Board voted 6-0 with one abstention not to recommend passage of Article 13. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Is there further discussion? If we're ready to vote? No, Mr. Carvalho.
Michael Carvalho, 2 Jersey Lane. The reference to 527 CMR 13.00 does not discuss the use of perchlorate in the explosive. There are six communities currently in Massachusetts that have had their groundwater contaminated by perchlorate. Perchlorate is a hazardous substance, and it's known to have some deleterious health effects. It's got a very low threshold of two parts per billion, and in the six communities I'm referencing, one or more water supply wells have been shut down. So while it's appropriate that the Fire Marshal, Fire Chief be involved in this, respectfully, I think that there is a scientific component here that, once this material gets into our drinking water supply, it is very difficult to take out. It's analogous to having ink in a sponge. We could threaten our own drinking water supply by not having better perchlorate controls. Perchlorate is not, as it stands right now, my understanding, is not prohibited. The developer could choose to use it or not choose to use it, could be a condition of the development, but perchlorate poses a threat to our drinking water supply. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carvalho. Further discussion? Sir, is your hand up? No? Okay. I think we're ready to vote. Voting period is open. If you're in favor, press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. Voting is closed, and the vote is 187 in favor and 71 opposed. So the motion is approved. Article 14 is another proposed amendment to the general bylaw, and Tom Keough moves the article as printed, and Jay Bothwick seconds the motion, and the Finance Committee takes no position, and the Board of Selectmen recommends not approving. Now I'll recognize Tom Keough for remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, first of all, I want to assure you this article is not about the SLV development, is it about site safety being planned for and built into the plans for any future large developments in town. It does not impact small residential developments or single-residence homes. In fire safety planning, residents are asked to locate, plan, and be able to use at least two fire escape routes out of each bedroom in their residence. In large development, fire safety codes will make sure appropriate exits do exist in all units. But once the residents are out of the buildings, how do the residents get off the site if they need to? In a development of 100-plus units, we'll probably have anywhere from 200 to 350 people and their vehicles there to get them off the sites. No matter what the cause of the evacuation, a large fire, hazardous materials incident, or serious weather, people may need to get off the site as quickly as possible. Having a second access road will provide that additional safety. An access road to the site can be blocked by a motor vehicle accident, hazardous winter weather, a large number of incoming emergency vehicles, or trees and wires down over the roadway. Please note, this can occur. On March 2, 2021, winter weather brought down three large trees over the single-access road to the Avalon Oaks apartment complex in nearby Wilmington, Mass. That caused the Wilmington Police Department to put out this notice on their social media platforms. Quote, "At this time, there is no vehicle access in or out of the complex," end quote. The road was closed for two to two-and-a-half hours until those trees got cleaned up, trapping the residents of 204 units in and preventing any requested help from getting to the site. I'd like you to consider safety for the residents of any future large developments and require the developers to have two access roads to the development. Make everyone who lives in our town safe and support Article 14. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And I recognize Ann Harrison for the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. The Board of Selectmen does not recommend approving Article 14, not because we favor large developments on dead-end roads, but because this article governs land use and should come from the Planning Board for inclusion in the zoning bylaws. Regulations on land use require more scrutiny than is available for a citizen's petition article. Article 14 would amend Article 10, police and other regulations of the general bylaws. Article 10 is a hodgepodge of regulations ranging from swimming pool fences to flying kites over roads. It is not the proper place for land use regulation. As Tom Keough said, this amendment to the bylaws is not needed urgently. We can wait for the Planning Board to develop their requirements for access to large projects. The large development that we currently face, it will not be stopped by local bylaws. For these reasons, lack of review by the Planning Board, unfortunate placement in the general bylaws, and a lack of urgent necessity, the Board of Selectmen urges you to vote "no" on Article 14. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. And I recognize Town Council, Michelle Randazzo.
Good evening.
No, don't push the button.
I'm not pushing that.
Bob, can we hit power to that mic?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everyone. Again, Michelle Randazzo from Town Council's office. As the previous speaker noted, zoning regulation is defined by state law as regulating the use of land building and structures. Because this proposed zoning bylaw amendment seeks to put in requirements for residential construction, it is typically considered within the purview of zoning, and it is quite possible that the Attorney General, who must review and approve all general and zoning bylaws passed by town meeting, may disapprove it on that basis.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there discussion? Looks like... Yes, sir. Mr. Morse.
Although this motion does not affect the SLV project, I think it's worth pointing out to the meeting that the SLV project has one single roadway access and no pedestrian access. That's 136 units. Secondly, I think that we should ask our Planning Board and our town planner to increase their sensitivity to issues like this as we move forward and establish rules, bylaws, in our town that would reflect the will of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morse.
Hello, I'm Mary Jo Fuerbach. I live at 5 Harold Street. While I definitely support and wish to have all residents in our town to be safe, I do have some concerns about this article. Any article that encourages greater roads brings with it environmental impacts, the kinds of impacts that many of us are opposing right now with SLV. I feel like requiring something like a second access point may be justified, but I would like to see more discussion and ideally design guidelines for that in order to prevent unnecessarily long or additional road construction in order to provide public safety. And so with that, I believe this does merit more thought, more discussion about how to provide safe public access while also maintaining the environmental integrity of a site. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuerbach. Further discussion? Are we ready to vote? Voting period is open. Voting period is closed, and the votes are 110 yes and 140 no. So the motion is defeated. And Article 15 concerns police and fire dispatch, and I'll recognize Sheila Hill for the main motion.
Thank you. I thought you were going to read the motion. No.
I can do that if you like.
Would you? I didn't...
Sheila Hill moves the article as printed in the warrant. Is that seconded? It's seconded. Now, Town Council has advised that legally this article is advisory only. Under state law, the final decision lies with the Board of Selectmen, and that's based on general principles of separation of powers between the legislative and executive arms of town government. In addition, if regional dispatch requires an intermunicipal agreement, the authority to enter into it is specifically vested in the Selectmen under Chapter 40, Section 14 of the general laws. Remarks, Ms. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. I hope that many of you have had the chance to read Chief Fitzgerald's article in The Cricket. It is heartfelt, and it is compelling, and I suggest, if you have your cellphones with you, you read it before you vote. So like the three articles that have preceded this one, the context is the same. It's a response to pressure from the state, pressure to increase housing density, hence 40B, 40R, 40A, all out of scale for our small-town character, and pressure to regionalize community police and fire services, which nets more money for the state and reduces local control. So with respect to moving 911 dispatch to Middleton, the question we must ask is, why now? The history of this still unproven center is unimpressive. First conceived in 2005 to serve 23 communities, it was actually established via the Essex County Sheriff's Department in 2008 to serve only 13 interested communities out of the original 23. 10 withdrew their interest. In 2010, six communities joined: Beverly, Essex, Middleton, Topsfield, and Winham. In 2015, Beverly sued to withdraw from the center's services, and in 2017, Amesbury's City Council voted unanimously to withdraw. Also in 2017, Manchester itself voted not to join the center. In 2019, the state took over the failing center, and to attract still-missing nine communities, it promised the service free for 10 years. As I've said before, raise your hand if you believe in a free lunch. After a 15-year, $20 million investment, we would join a center that serves 1.8 million people in only four towns out of 23. Records indicate 25% employee turnover, 30 sustained complaints, reports of dispatchers unfamiliar with town roads or layouts, and issues with incompatible software. Hence, moving our dispatch to Middleton now, even if it takes two years to execute, is premature. It's a bargain we don't need. We have $6 million in reserves to invest in our own police and fire protection, and it's an unknown risk to residents' safety. In the future, if more towns join, or there is evidence that the center meets appropriate performance standards, our Finance Committee rightly must consider the cost savings, possibly $2 million over 10 years, versus the cost of necessary personnel, equipment, and software upgrades here. But they must weigh that against what has always been our priority: high-quality, personalized public safety services. In closing, this is a true public forum, not the recent Zoom version on the topic with only two callers. It's simply an opportunity to give your voice to your concerns and preferences. It's a snapshot in time, 2021. It is non-binding. It's not meant to co-op town boards, but your feedback can provide them time-saving direction for present and future considerations of a move. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. And I recognize Eli Bowling for the Board of Selectmen.
So about nine years ago, in response to requests from the Fire Department, a compromise reached at...
I think you need to tilt the microphone up a bit.
I'll start again. So about nine years ago, in response to requests from the Fire Department, and a compromise reached an annual... compromise reached at annual town meeting, the Board of Selectmen undertook a review of emergency dispatches services in town and options for improving them, including possibly moving dispatch to Middleton Regional Dispatch Center. Long and the short of it is, at the time, the Regional Dispatch Center was relatively new, and the Board of Selectmen elected it to make incremental improvements to our local dispatch services, preferring not to move to a fledgling organization. Since then, as Ms. Hill has pointed out, the state has taken over the management of the Regional Dispatch Center and now fully funds it. Dispatch Center is actually a mature and stable operation, and all annual operating costs borne by the state. The fire department once again asked the town either to bring our local dispatch services up to a standard closer to what the dispatch center can provide, or to move to the dispatch center. After an initial review, both the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen felt that this warranted a fresh, in-depth look, and the Board of Selectmen has begun that process. The Board of Selectmen has begun, but not completed, investigations in the neighboring communities' short, medium, and long-term plans with respect to dispatch, and we have had one public forum with very limited public participation on dispatch, and have additional public forums planned and expected in the coming weeks. We've collected some of the information on the options that we've gathered so far into documents on the town's website, but have not yet had adequate time to engage the public on the details of that content. Therefore, the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen both believe that we should continue the investigation and the public discourse on both options, providing you with all of the objective information that we can, so the residents can be fully informed of the costs and impacts of both the option to move to regional dispatch and the costs and impacts of keeping dispatch locally, before we actually make any decision. So we recommend a no vote on this article, because we don't believe that we have been able to present to you the information that we think ought to be collected and presented. Don't think you actually have the full story. So that's why we recommend a no vote tonight, and we would urge you to come to the public forums, so that we can have an extended, actual public discourse over this.
Thank you, Mr. Bowling. And I recognize Sarah Melish for the Finance Committee.
I'll echo some of what Eli said. The Finance Committee feels this article is premature, and whether to stay local or go regional for dispatch services should be considered by the taxpayers when all financial information is available and after public forums have been held. The fire chief feels we need two dispatchers per shift, not one, and needs upgraded equipment. The additional cost needs to be determined. In addition, we need to determine the cost of not having a dark station if we go regional. With full financial information, the taxpayers can make an educated decision regarding the cost differential to remain local or utilize regional services. We suggest you either vote no or pass over this article. Thank you.
And I'll recognize Jeff Bodmer Turner for the Board of Selectmen. Bob, can we have that mic?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I want to make just a brief comment in regard to some of the statements that were made by Sheila Pigeon Hill. The city of Amesbury did, in fact, the City Council did, in fact, vote to exit the then Essex County Regional Center. There were significant problems with that center. We're well aware of that. It's part of why we've been cautious as a town in joining. However, Amesbury came to a point where they realized that they would need to partner in a regional agreement with one other town, and the police and fire chiefs both said, "We can't do that." The City Council then went forward with a motion that said, "Under the changed leadership of the state of Massachusetts, this center is meeting the needs of the city of Amesbury." And they are now a member of the center and have remained a member throughout the years that they've been involved in the center. They never withdrew. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bodmer Turner. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. Gary Russell, 9 Magnolia Avenue, Manchester. So first of all, the notion that this is some sort of cash grab and power play by the state for regionalization is just a distracting, false narrative. Second of all, the improved CAD system, computer-assisted dispatch in a well-run center, is the best way to protect public safety, because the best way to protect safety is quick, fast, accurate data. The human mind is an unreliable place, the human memory unreliable, for local knowledge. The improved systems, like the one that's used in the city of Boston, has the capability for dispatchers online to enter local information as it's gathered, so if it's not in the system, it gets put in the system. While I appreciate the sentiment that there's a local culture, local knowledge, there's no guarantee that that protects our public safety. If that's the case, if you really believe that, then I would suggest that we have a residency requirement for our dispatchers. They must be local, and they must have some sort of entry exam for local information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Alfred Rossi, 89 Bridge Street. I'd like to move the question.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. Is that seconded? It's seconded. That's a two-thirds vote, and it's not debatable. If you're in favor of that, please say aye. Opposed, no. I have no doubt it prevails by more than two-thirds. So we'll go to an electronic vote, then, on Ms. Hill's motion. Voting is open. If you're in favor, press 1. If you're opposed to Ms. Hill's motion, press 2. And the vote is 82 in favor and 162 opposed. The motion does not prevail. Article 16 is a motion relating to zoning recodifications, of which we have none in the warrant, and Sheila Hill, who is also the principal sponsor of this article, moves to pass over it do nothing under Article 16. Is that seconded? It's seconded. If you're in favor of passing over, please say aye. Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. I so declare it. Article 17 concerns an appropriation from available funds to reduce the tax rate. We only need to take that up if we change the budget, which we did not. So Eli Bowling moves to pass over it do nothing under Article 17, and Sarah Melish seconds the motion. If you're in favor of passing over, please say aye. Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. I so declare it. And Eli Bowling moves to dissolve the annual town meeting, and Jeff Bodmer Turner seconds the motion. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. I declare the annual town meeting dissolved. Thank you all for coming.